I'm going to declare a quorum. Can you put the view on gallery? On view in the right-hand corner? Can we just get one of you to test either Sylvia or Cara or Sam? That your mic is working, that you're hearing us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Okay, well, that test failed.
Okay, Cara has not heard.
What about me?
Sylvia?
What about me?
I think this one's on us.
I would say I can hear them.
Sounds great on this end.
I mean, that would be the one I would have guessed is the one that's on. I guess you can try one of the others. The situation better?
Still work.
The volume's turned up, I assume? Yeah, looks like it.
Go down to the right-hand corner of the the volume here. Oh, I hear something. Sylvia, talk, say something.
Something.
Okay. You did something.
Turn it off and turn it back on again.
That's the key to every, to making everything. Right? Okay, so I'm going to declare quorum and we'll start the meeting at 6:07. Sorry. I don't know why we're a little late. I think we're just talking. And so we're going to open the floor to public comment. And no one's here, so I'm going to close the floor to public comment. There's no one online. And then consider approval of the minutes from December 17th, 2024. Does anybody have any comments on the meeting minutes? For I thought this was a good way of writing them.
Yeah, for a while back, maybe since the last couple I've been doing that accessible files.
Okay.
Yeah.
Readable.
Yeah. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Hey, all in favor of approving the minutes? Raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, the meeting minutes are approved. Okay. Library policy review.
Some big ones. So tonight, we're going to start with the collection development policy, which you have in front of you, a request for reconsideration, program exhibition and display, and the request to review and approval, which doesn't require for, request for public records. So I'm happy to jump into it. It's, you have in your packet both a clean version and redline version. The gist of this, the request for reconsider, I mean, the collection development policy, yeah, this is a big one, right? This is how we and I think this is the third time we've done it in four years, so it's good to keep it fresh. Some minor changes. I think probably the most substantive change was a change that happened in the Colorado Legislature last year. Most of the changes that were adopted by the legislature for book challenges were things that we had already incorporated into our policy. But the one that's different is that once a book is, falls into the request for reconsideration, and that is, that if a book is challenged, you don't have to review it again for another period of time to be determined by our policy. We recommend, we're recommending five years, which is essentially the length of the time for but most of the changes to the collection development policy, there's a new paragraph on AI. It just, you know, not that we don't purchase things created by AI, but that slippery slope, we're not really actively engaged in doing that currently. They're reduced by AI. And then changing the name to Vol. Public Collaborative District, two other things. Do you have any questions?
So that I'm clear here. Is the collection development policy and the request for reconsideration together?
They are more or less, so much the request for reconsideration is a
Part of the
Link within the collection development policy. Mike's selection and the determination for whether or not we keep a book on the shelf once it's been requested for reconsideration is if we purchase it according to the collection development policy. So the two are inextricably linked.
Okay.
Your request for consideration. It's still staffs.
That's correct. That is correct. Yeah, and I don't know. I think we did ask Kim, it's, yeah, probably throughout with the city of Boulder, it did stop with me. Obviously, the city could remove me if I was crazy choices. I think the intent is to protect the library and the institution from the individual opinions of board members who may or may not wish to have a book challenged. Obviously, if you don't like the decision that I've made, you can fire me, right? And put somebody in who will ban the books that you would prefer to ban. Okay, seems unlikely in today's environment, but you know, you never know. Stranger things have happened in other libraries throughout the state and the country, so.
Okay. So I think we'll take these two together. Or do you? Okay. Sorry.
Exhibition and the slide selection policy. Collection development policy, both are linked to the request for reconsideration.
Okay, that's what I thought. They were all kind of like one big thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think my packet is.
Well, it presents clean version, red.
Yeah, okay, that's what the
Version of each policy.
Looked at it online, but I didn't know. Any other comments about these policies?
Yeah, just to clarify, David, did you say that in the event the Board of Trustees disagrees with you on a, you know, a challenged book, their only recourse is to fire you? They can't overrule your decision? Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. And you actually, you can't fire me for not banning a book, but you could come up with some other reason that you didn't like me. I'm an at-will employee. But I mean, that would be prohibited by the legislature that was passed this last year. You cannot, an employee, a library employee, which would be myself as well, could not be liable or held be fired because of the unwillingness to ban a book.
Right.
But there must be a half dozen other reasons.
In the parking lot outside?
It's more the scenario where there's pressure from a substantial portion of the community to to maintain or get rid of a book. And I mean, it's a sort of clean way to leave the Board of Trustees out of it, but could be trouble down the road. Just an observation.
It could.
Does the legislature require that this decision be left with library staff?
Equally split.
Themselves?
I think it's probably half and half. Half of the libraries in the state, it's a responsibility of the director. In another half, it is a responsibility of the trustees, so the trustees have a review process. I think more libraries are moving towards what we've had in place for decades, and that's, it's a responsibility of the director.
If you look at like what the problems were on like the Western slope and stuff. The way we have it set up, I think, makes that whole thing a lot more difficult. So, you know, you're talking multiple election cycles and to replace trustees at one by one. I guess they could fire everybody, but.
Again, rightful or whatever was that they took back intergovernmental arrangement. Commissioners took back the power of the district and then wiped out the board and put on their board.
Yeah, I don't think they could do that here.
We, we won a lawsuit on that one. But the typical way is, as David said, they start replacing one trustee at a time, which, you know, over time, they can change the character of the board and the direction.
The other is, there's nothing, if we disagreed with David on her decision later, there's nothing that stops us from having, putting a statement into the minutes as to our objection to his position.
Yeah.
And nothing to stop the public from coming directly to you once the decision has been reached. Yeah, and there have been people who've said they would do that in the past. I don't know that they have, and not around a book of late, but certainly around programs, where they said, well, we're going to go to the board, and I see here's their email address. Have at it.
And when it comes to this exhibition piece, does that include the Canada? Gallery here, is that?
Library-related programs, obviously.
Someone was upset with a piece of art, same thing.
That's correct.
So I just have a question that I think I posed it with David some time ago, but I just wanted to ask with Kim here. It related to the legislation. It's what I recall at the, the summer conference, but it was the reference to all employees being librarians. You know, it sort of refers to that term librarian, and I wondered if we should have a definition that sort of links employees, director to librarian. Do you know, Kim, that what I'm talking about, it, it was the legislation that sort of protected employees, right?
Right.
And I just wondered if that belongs here, or if it, if we don't have to worry about that just because we call people other things and David isn't by title, a librarian. Is a librarian.
Yeah. I don't, if I remember right, I haven't looked at that statute for a while, but I thought it said employees.
I think it does too, Kim.
Does it? Okay, I, I thought it said librarians and but when I hear people, when I talk to folks and I ask them, who, what do they do? They say, I'm a librarian, but that around here, so.
And I frequently, probably most guilty of that. I mean, I call everybody librarians.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
We can, so
Maybe it's not an issue.
We can certainly check that, Benita, and then if, if you want, if you want to approve it, subject to changing that, so it's all encompassing. We can do that, or if you want to wait till we find out for sure, we can wait to.
Yeah, like it could just be in a definitions thing or something like that, but I don't know for other people. I didn't have time to pull that up to confirm it, so I'm fine approving it as it is, and if I
Yeah, I'd say we just
We can always amend it.
Amend it, approve it and have them look it up if it, if it's not covering all the employees, and we'll make a change to it.
Yeah.
We can quickly update that.
Yeah, and for us, there's, there is no ambiguity because the decision to keep or, or rid of a book rests with me alone. So there is not another person who would make a decision about removing a book from the collection. So in a sense, the state law, its protection is one that no, no other staff member is authorized to decide.
Okay.
Remove a book from the collection.
Okay.
So.
That makes sense to me, but I used to know the terminology needed to be.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll have them look it up. Does that sound okay? So approving policies A, B, and C, right? We're gonna do that, which is collections and development. I'll make a motion to approve the collection and development policy, request for reconsideration of policy, and program and exhibition and display selection policy. I'll make that motion.
Yes, I'm gonna.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hey, all in favor of approving those three policies? That's an aye.
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 Sam?
Aye.
Yeah, okay.
Just for reminder and for your edification.
Let me finish my
Please.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion.
Just for your edification, again, the decision that resides with me is not regarding the content of a book, has nothing to do with it. It is solely around the policy and whether or not we have followed that policy in acquiring a book to be added to the collection. And the policy, as you see, you know, it does not, we do not make decisions about the placement of a book for age groups or its specification. We acknowledge in the policy that we collect books of all different types and all different opinions and all different reading levels. So there's not a what we, what we are merely doing when we, when we I decide to keep a book on the shelf once it's been challenged is simply saying, did we follow the policy in acquiring this item? Not validating the content, not standing up for any idea of what's all within the book. Just so that is clear.
Should we see what is in the chat? One of them asked me a question.
See, that's been in there for a while, but yeah.
I didn't notice that.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Now, the final policy for the night, review and approval of revisions to request approval of revisions to the request for public records policy.
Again, this is, you did approve of an overall policy. We accepted the guidelines from the states. From the state early on, I think it was like one of your second, second actions as board, once we had formed. This is as a result of having gotten a Cora request this last year. We've updated the policy, included somewhat more robust language throughout, and then also included in your packet is the process that staff follow, which we don't require you to approve, but just, it's, it's really a for-year information about how core requests are handled. It is a policy that we take very seriously. We obviously have to do plenty to update it periodically, and I think this is like the first iteration of what we needed to do. It's the price. I don't even know. Do we know, Jennifer, now? Like, so the, the price that we can charge is mandated by the state. I think it changes maybe every two years, so there may be
Less than that.
Yeah, we can charge less than that. So
Is that $41?
Yeah.
Okay.
And but I'm happy, I, I feel like it's really good. Jennifer worked heavily with the cities. They have recently updated their policies, and so we did take a lot of language from them. But I'm happy to take any questions that you might have around the court.
I was gonna say, this pretty much looks like the cities, right?
It's pretty straightforward, yep. I mean, I don't know about straightforward. It's, it's pretty robust.
Yeah, I mean, it, but it looks like the cities close to the
I just had one question. So you're required to
That's correct.
So I'm just anticipating when we get in a place where Moms for Liberty arrives and they decide to flood the zone requests.
Or requests.
Can there be something in here that says if we get an ORX number on request for the same record, three days is no longer relevant? So you're not put in a position trying to
Yeah, there is a provision in here that if multiple requests are received around the same subject, we can combine them, same request. It does not specify, because I had that same question. It doesn't specify if, if, if the three days begins upon the first request or upon the 12th. My assumption is, is that it begins upon the 12th. So at the 12th, it's all one request, and so we'll have three days from the last request to begin to respond.
I would assume it begins on the first.
You would assume it begins on the first.
To.
That's how I would interpret that. But either way, the, the rest of the requests are basically moot at that point. You're already working identical first one.
How would you know other ones are coming? You wouldn't know.
Yeah.
Unless they bombard you on the same
Second, third day.
Yeah.
The city addresses that too. They usually like will say, we've had multiple requests or something like that if they do, and we'll pull the information and make it public or whatever.
Yeah, you can request an extension, Tom. So for a really broad request, you can access, request an extension of time, which, you know, in good faith, if they don't respond back, then, you know, you could assume that you have a few extra days.
Here I am again on defining a person, but what is, who is the records custodian? And could we possibly say the director instead of that? Because we don't define
The IT director for most records and the
Sorry, for personal.
Where, where do we define that?
Somewhere right at the beginning, a designated.
The district serves, you know.
So if the requests go to myself, Jennifer, then I assign
It's most right and directed a designated custodian of records.
Did it see the actual naming in here somewhere?
The custodian is
Does not name them.
The custodian is
See the custodian making a request. And then under the fees, it's at the discretion of the records custodian. But I just didn't I just wondered if we could make it less and make it clearer.
Can you hear me?
By putting the titles in or just
The who the custodian is.
The director or something, you know.
Yeah, as they didn't
That is listed in our procedure. It's just not in the policy, but it is on page 34. Off the page 34 list, the individuals.
Are you able to hear us?
Yeah, so we should just say, because ultimately, the accountability for doing it again would fall to the director. And so just assigning those things would also, that's a process, which we don't publish that on the web, so it's probably best to say the director or a designate.
Yeah.
You could just take the, the definition from your procedure and
Yes.
Don't believe we accept a multiple requests from entities individual, and the multiple or serial requests from the same requester within the time span of three consecutive business days will be considered a single request. So a request is coming from different people that live in both.
One for a second.
So that gets at your point.
Did you hear us, Cara? Sylvia, can you hear us?
I can hear you guys, I think.
But we can't hear you, Kim.
Can you hear us?
Oh, yeah, we lost you.
Check. Check the chat.
There we go. All right, we got you now.
Put it in the chat.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I like that. It felt like a movie or something.
Two things. I checked the statute and it does say employee. And it described, describes it very broadly, including contractors and others. And then with regard to the, the Cora document custodian, that's identified in your annual admin resolution. And right, right now, I think it has the director and my office, because we still have a bunch of the historical stuff that hasn't moved yet.
Maybe we just say in the policy then, a custodian as defined, you know, by the district. Yeah, yeah, okay, as the director.
Differentiated it for your request.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Make sure we identify who is going to handle these things, that it's not anybody who receives it.
Do we have, and I saw actually some emails going around related to this recently, because maybe it's changing. Do we have specific retention intervals that we apply for employees, for teams and email?
Do it again.
Asked what our retention intervals were for teams and emails. So if we got a request.
David and the
Okay, so if we got a request for emails from three years ago for any employee, we would basically say we have, right?
We have them saved in our archive there.
Fair game.
Yeah.
Our retention interval would normally lead to the removal of those records, at which point we would respond with, we no longer have any records that match this request.
Yes.
Any comment on what their request was? You know, it's, it's everything, right? So it's any Teams messages. So I think it's also 90 days, but they were to have files, for instance.
Archive them.
Files, they archive email or Teams chats. I don't know if you can archive Teams chats, but if they archived emails, they would be subject to Cora. And any document that you write and save on the shared be coratable as well.
Do we talk to employees about like not keeping their own personal records in excess of those retention intervals?
Okay.
When's the last time you received a Cora request?
October, November? Yeah. October, November.
From a former employee for their person.
And then the one other question I had was, there's a whole bunch of things listed and access denied, and this is maybe under one of those things, but where would like our video camera footage fall with respect to a Cora request?
It's covered by the state law, all right? So the state law covers the video camera.
And exempts it from Cora requests?
It is. You can't request it. Neither can staff, honestly. It requires a subpoena.
Okay. Well, I assumed it was in one of the CRS references. It just wasn't called out explicitly, so.
Do we think our fee should be less?
No.
No?
No, for the redacting. So I'm not giving anything away. It's all public record. Like, so for redacting, we rely upon legal for doing that, and so I don't know what, Kim didn't do it, but like one of his, one of his people did sort of rate is significantly higher than $41 an hour. I did not feel comfortable being the sole responsible person for redacting records, and it's, the law itself is a little complicated.
Okay.
So there are some things that are protected and other things that are not.
It helps keep the requests focused as well.
Yep.
It does seem like a good chunk of this policy is focused specifically on solicitation records. Is that just because we assume that the people most likely to make Cora requests are vendors, that we
That's the most common.
Don't take their bid basically, or don't select their bid.
Or to arrive at better understanding of how the board reached the decision on something.
I was just gonna, I don't know if anybody mentioned this, but in the past, I've been required to give up texts as well, text messages as part of Cora, so just FYI.
That is a reminder that if you're conducting library business or board business or you're emailing, do it through your boulderlibrary.org email, because if you use your personal email, you could potentially be giving your personal email up for Cora requests, so that's another just comment from the It's a good rule of practice. I'm not your lawyer.
What did Kim just say about text messages, though? Text communication?
That was Sam.
Same.
Yeah, you could.
Your text
Messages.
Your text messages can be coratable.
Just assume everything you say regarding the library or
Yeah, I just
Yeah.
Okay.
Fellow trustees or whatever.
The state's not Yeah, sorry, right, Kim.
It all goes back to that public meeting requirement that we've talked about before. And if you're holding a meeting and talking about library district business, it's determined to be a meeting, and therefore it's open to the public, whether it's on your texts or your emails or wherever it is.
And I assume, Sam, that you're referring to, that there were three or two or more, three, three, at least three board members who were
No, I wasn't. No, I, we were certainly aware of that. It was text messages between me and one other board member. So we weren't in violation of a meetings law, but it was communication that the two of us had had on a specific topic, and at the time, the district lawyer said, yeah, you gotta cough that up. I don't know, Kim, if that squares with your interpretation, but perhaps we were being overly cautious. I mean, it was just between two members of the board, but it was on the topic that was horrid. You know what I'm saying?
Yep, yep. Yeah, I would generally not interpret that as coratable.
And Kim, the state does not require specific record retention, right? Like, we're free to kind of set our own record retention rules?
Yes. Yeah, there's a, the state archives has rules that you can adopt, but they're way, way, way too complicated. They're like 90 pages. They're not worth
Adapted the handbook, Kim, early on, Johnny was on the board.
Oh, okay, yeah. So, but
Yours for board numbers, right, David?
It does. And it has recommendations for everything you can possibly imagine. Personnel records, bids, contracts, all that.
Be record retention officer for my company. Get a lot of questions.
A lot of fun job.
Better than snow removal.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any more questions regarding the policy? Okay. Let's move to, I'm gonna move to approve the record, now I want to call it record, the request for public records policy. A second? A second. All in favor, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the policy that I just described? All right.
I.
Okay, great. All opposed? Okay, any opposed? No, it passes. Okay, directors, up to you.
Well, I'll keep mine quick, because I know you guys want to talk about your stuff. Financial audit will be coming up the week of May sixth, just so you have an awareness again. They may contact any or all of you about topics, concerns, anything with regard to that. The firm's name again is.
McMahon.
McMahon, and they should come as a representative of McMahon. And then the Gunbar Library memo from nineteen seventy eight was just for kicks. Yeah, Celia found that in the basement. I don't know going through what, but I thought how funny that. So I don't know who, I mean, Chris Kears later established a marketing firm in Boulder. And he's long since retired. But I don't know what he was doing in nineteen seventy eight. In the deputy director of the library, which Richard Luce was the deputy director of the Boulder Public Library. In nineteen seventy eight, he went on to become the head of the library at Los Alamos, and then the dean of libraries at the University of Oklahoma. So funny that they arrived at the same conclusions we did. Three, four years later. At a different price tag.
I'm gonna suggest. Share that with weekly, weekly or.
Yeah.
Nice little story. We've finally done something that the origin of which goes back to years. Right?
It's crazy, right?
You know, and that ties with the fact that once we be thing, we have moved faster than a speeding book. Expand the library and serve above them.
We may be the only ones who find it amusing and. Nevertheless, maybe we'll pitch that story, found this memo. There are notes from the sixties that I know exist, because I've read them of discussions about. There was a, there was a like, right, you know, I gotta repeat this story, because I may be the only person that left like vaguely. They opened a library in Heatherwood in nineteen sixty seven as a grant. And it ran for two years before the grant expired and they closed it down. That was in hopes of doing a, I think they wanted it, like this one mentions as well, in exchange for. There's, there's an exchange, and then this letter about incorporation, right? Yeah, so the incorporation vote happened, I believe, in the late eighties, early nineties. And yeah, won by like twenty votes to incorporate Prince, but not all of Prince. Have Gunbar or incorporate.
And I like that last list is people who wanted it at the Twenty Eighth and Iris, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of funny, too, when that was being built.
Just hilarious.
Okay, so I'm gonna turn this. We're gonna start with the recruitment package and package and process. Benita, I was gonna ask you to go through this one.
Yeah, and I'll turn to Sylvia. You wanna add in? So it's just a story on page forty two. You can see. Red line, colored lines that reflect what we have added. One of the things I added. After Sylvia and I had met was just adding in Sam's name, because oftentimes people ask, well, who's leaving, right? And so I just wanted to put that like upfront, that that's the term of the person who's leaving, because it isn't a mystery. So the. Major piece related to this is. A proposal to give us a little more role in making at least a recommendation of who to interview. And I've pitched it to the county most directly to Claire. With the thought that this is a good way for us to begin to, you know, get comfortable and see what our process is when we. Take this completely over and if they would allow us to do that. So what is being proposed is that. The candidates that apply, the applicants, we would have a discussion about them here and make recommendations of the top. Three, five, it, you know, depends on how many people apply. And certainly, the selection committee of county and city. Could take that or leave it and could add to it or, you know, revise as they see fit. But I. And I think Doug and Sylvia agree that this is a way to get us moving in the direction of leading this process. So that is the major sort of change in the body of the letter and. Any questions related to that?
Would there be two rounds of recommendations we'd make, one on who to interview and then a second time on who to nominate after the interviews?
No.
We would only make recommendations as to who to interview?
Yeah.
Is there a reason we would not want to make a recommendation as to who to nominate?
Well, it is, no, but it is their process. I don't know. I, I think they might. Walk at the, you know.
Because it's basically then saying, are, like, what's the point of us even attending the interviews at that point for not taking how people do in the interviews and accounting for it in a final recommendation?
Well, and in that process, you know, we were neutral in that, because they did ask us, Doug.
Yes.
Right?
I think the idea is, well, I think that's something to talk about here is. So tonight, we'll appoint two of us. Or two of you, because I don't plan to volunteer to, you know, be on this committee with the city council and the commissioners. And I believe, you know, for us to decide tonight is, A, is this package okay to send to the city? And B, you know, who are, who, this, this could be in no particular order. B, who are we gonna appoint? And then C, like, as a, as a board, you know. You know, what will our input be? And, you know, will it be to recommend? One specific candidate to replace Sam? Or will it be, you know, or maybe multiple candidates and then give our approval based on the interviews? I think. You know, that I, or, you know, those are the kind of the options we have. Or just, you know, we give them the applications, say, these are the people that we would recommend. That you, you know, consider strongly. And then, you know, they can pick, it gives them a little freedom. I, I kind of think that would go better with those, that body. Instead of just telling them, especially in the second year of trustees, but that's just me. That's my personal opinion. And then, you know, I think the other thing is. How much input is a board? So we're gonna appoint the two people. And the two people will work with the city and the county and the staff to put this whole process on. It's not a ton of work, but you do have to read applications and go to the interviews. You don't really have to go there. You could, you could watch them later recorded, because we don't really participate in the interviews, but. And then.
We asked a question.
Did we? Well, we can ask, we could always ask a question again.
I mean.
But, but the questions are already written, like, we're not.
Well, we're proposing the question.
Yeah, yeah, they could change them.
Yeah.
So.
Andy, can I ask you a question? Is your recommendation, is your thought that the, the board of trustees would recommend a candidate? Without, without suggesting a policy to change the way the process goes, right? This is already a policy established by the city in the.
We're all agreeing the final decision is with the county and.
You're asking, you're asking whether.
I think it's just a question of whether, and to Doug's point, and maybe it wouldn't be a single candidate, but it does seem. I mean, I agree, it's good for us to make recommendations as to who to interview after the initial set of applicants come. But I think after we see the interviews, we'd also potentially want to be in a position to make a recommendation for one or more candidates that we deem as reasonable.
I'll let Sylvia talk. Go ahead.
I think, I think the goal is.
Sorry, Sylvia, timeout.
How interesting.
Just switch it back to echo cancelling. If we keep switching it back and forth, it'll.
Why?
Keep working. I don't know.
We said it was working to the IT staff tonight before they left.
It's like. Right now, Sylvia, say something.
Um, can you hear me? Okay. I think that, Andy, I think the long-term goal is to get to that, to, to that point. You know. Short of us changing the arrangement so that the trustees can select their own, you know, replacements. I think the goal is to get, you know, to slowly interest that way as much as possible. So, yeah, so I'm definitely in agreement that that would be ideal, but I, I think with Doug and Benita. It seems like we kind of have to take this in stages. And so I guess the other two things I just want to point out is, so the packet is not necessarily complete. And you're gonna see a lot of stuff on there that might be very twenty twenty four related, especially in regards to the press release and all of that. And that would have to be updated by library staff before we put it out. Just to make sure everything in there is current, we'd also have to make some decisions with staff about the timeframe that's in that packet. There are a lot of dates that are open, because I, we just didn't know, you know, what, what the time slots would be after we make this decision. And then I think the third question that I've had is just from the perspective of the IGA. I'm hoping Kim can kind of help us, like, make sure we're not proposing something that will be told is outside the bounds of what we've agreed to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to look at that IGA, Sylvia, but again.
That was Claire's, Claire Levy's reaction was positive and she didn't think it was, I mean, she thought it was aligned with the process. And she agreed that. Our practice of, you know, we have to have a public meeting, we have a public discussion, maybe we get some attention to our meeting if applicants knew we were talking about them. But I think it's important that they see our transparency in this process and that we exercise good judgment. And, you know, that it flows along. But the other thing, the, just to finish the conversation with Claire. When we were walking away from the coffee shop, she said, you know, this is probably a policy discussion that I should have with the other commissioners. So, you know, she said, I'll put it on the agenda after I get the memo and we can have a discussion about it.
The. So I think also going back to Andy's point. I mean, we don't know what applicants will get. So if we get five applicants for one seat, you know, we may recommend two or, you know, we, you know, we might have to talk about. You know, if we get two applicants, then maybe only replicate, you know, one, so I don't, I don't, I hope that's not the case, but.
Was there a pause between the day we did the interviews or the two days or whatever it was? And then we convened one more, we convened again for them to select, or did they select after the second interview? Because I was thinking, would we even have time to confer if, you know?
Yeah, we might not. So.
Did you say they asked for a recommendation?
They did, but during the, during the public meeting, you know, they asked for.
Not the public meeting, during our meeting after the interviews.
Yeah, but that was still a public meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So like.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm saying is they seem to want our input at that phase.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We should be ready to give it to them.
Yeah, and I, and I, what I would propose is with the two people we, you know, depending on the cycle of when these meetings are. Because that's another sort of thing for the people that choose to do this. You kind of just get told when all the meetings are. And they're usually during the day and that kind of stuff. And so the interviews, you don't necessarily have to, to go to, at least one of you should probably be there, but like, because those are recorded and you can watch them later. But I think you would be able to. I think one of the questions is, is, you know, as a board. We're gonna nominate two people to be on that. I think one good thing would be is individually, you know, review the application. I don't know if we'll, and then you can give your recommendations to the two committee members. I don't know if we'll be able to meet in between times. There could be, we need to go over the schedule and assignment here, but.
So there'd be an opportunity to share feedback.
Share feedback.
Had this discussion here, and this is what came up related to that, this candidate that you're thinking about.
I, I do think we should empower the two people that we're nominating to.
Yeah.
Make this decision between them. They don't, I mean, if the board has the ability to input, great, but like, that's why we're nominating two people. We should delegate.
That's where I was coming from is, to me, just to streamline the process, that could be an approach we take, which is. The, the two people on the ad hoc committee, and I don't know what to call them at this point, but those two people would be the first people to review all the applications. And then they do the legwork to figure out who they think the best recommendations might be. And then they can bring them to the board as a whole, and then the board is, you know, can still have input, can still, you know, be part of a, do their own review. But then ideally, then they support the recommendations of the, the two individuals that go forward. That would streamline it, in my opinion. But then, again, I have to ask Kim for, for more of his thoughts. So at any point, I mean, is all of that, is that okay to be doing the, the? The approval of the recommendations, is that okay to be doing that in the public meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, it should be in a public meeting.
Okay. Yeah.
So it sounds like we don't know that our full board will have an opportunity to meet between the interviews and the final decision.
No, but.
Personally, I would be comfortable empowering the two people we appoint here to make a recommendation in that final meeting.
Yeah.
As to who they view as acceptable candidates.
That, that, I like that idea. I think. We'll, we'll talk about, okay, let's make a decision on that. Maybe we do, okay, sorry, Tom.
Just picking up, why don't we keep it somewhat informal, but. Practically. The two people who are nominated to be, who are gonna represent the board. Represent the board, including making their own recommendations based upon their, going through the process. So it's kind of. Not a formal approval, but it's, we're empowering whoever the two people are. Share with the commissioners and the councils, this is who we think is best.
Yeah, and any of the trustees can give input on any of the.
The two.
Yeah.
People who are representing the rest of us.
Okay, so can we just kind of put an underline on this and as a board, maybe like a nod or no? It's like, is it okay, as we discussed? Give me a nod if we empower the two people that, you know, are selected, I'm gonna call it the trustee nomination committee. To make selections together based on, you know, individual input that they might get from other boards. Does that sound good? Non, non. Sam, you, you don't count, I guess.
But I was gonna ask, when you, who did it last year? Was it you, Doug?
And. It was me and Benita.
Yeah.
Did the selection committee have a rubric that they sort of scored against, or was it more informal review?
Guys, it was. There was no like scoring rubric, no, it was based on their personal opinions, I think.
I have to say, well, you guys did a great job.
We've used.
Good applicant.
We've used you guys as examples, actually.
Right.
Go ahead, Sylvia.
Oh, and I think just kind of thinking about whoever these two people are. I would suggest that we try to keep that, not have the same people do it year after year. And Doug, you've said you weren't gonna, you're not interested in doing it this year, but it'd be kind of nice to just get a different set of eyes each year, just so we have a little bit of diversity, diversity in the input year after year. So just a thought.
Yeah. Okay.
So. Could I continue on or should you?
Yeah.
So then there's a proposed schedule that's there.
Yeah, let's.
And so we.
Look at that real quick, because I think.
Yeah, that's what I was going.
Yeah, sorry.
And so it's, you know, today's date in our discussion here. And if we can agree on what's in the packet, so it is just sharing. What you see here plus what you saw the last time related to the outreach organizations and that whole list. But we would send that package to the county commissioners and city council tomorrow. And both groups have been notified that, to anticipate that we were sending this on January twenty second. So that has been confirmed. And then we're asking them to, and so we're appointing our two members. Early February. We're asking them by that time to appoint members to the committee. I know that city council has a study session Thursday, and they're talking about appointments and some various things. And maybe this could slip in and they could add this to their agenda.
They did add it to their agenda this morning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, so related to that, then, you know, you can see the comment due date, but I tried to just map this out related to. You know, our timeframe and giving applicants a month, basically, to. Consider applying, but have that application process open a month, and that's sort of in line with what the city. consider applying, but have that application process open a month. And that's sort of in line with what the city has done in the past and county. And then you see, you know, late March, reviewing applicants and deciding on the top applicants. And so our meeting of March would be the time that, would be the date that we would make our recommendations on the candidates.
The recommendations on who to interview.
On the, yes, on the candidates interview.
My only concern is this waiting till the 20th to open it up. Once, these comments back to Celia are from the county and the, and you're meet, this is.
Their appointments?
On the February 5th, comments on draft packet due to.
Yeah, yeah.
From, you mean from the county and the.
Yeah.
Okay. And.
So I don't know, we had in there something about the board finalizing the packet, but I'm not sure.
February 18th.
I mean, and that's, that's the date of our meeting. And so that's, I'm not sure that we actually need to do that.
No, I would say maybe like, you know, if we don't, hopefully we'll get the comments before that. But, you know, if we could go live like February 6th or 7th and go till March 6th or 7th. And then I'd say the two committee members can make, make changes to the packet based on the comments. Does that sound?
Yeah.
Sound okay? There's nothing that says that we have to come and look at this again as a board. Unless there's major objections to what we're proposing, but I don't think there will be. And that way, it just because it's six weeks then, because we really need the new trustee by that last April meeting. Cause otherwise, or.
May.
Oh yeah, we just need him by May.
Yeah.
Never mind. But May.
20th.
20th, okay. For some reason I'm thinking, yeah, okay.
We could move that up.
Yeah, hopefully.
And then.
Maybe instead of board of trustees, it's a committee, selection committee finalizes packet or something by like the 7th.
Yeah.
Or something.
I assume it's pretty fixed that, you know, the May meeting is when we want to sit. We wouldn't want to move it up by a meeting.
We can't, we, his term ends.
Okay.
Technically ends on May 20th or whatever.
The date we were all pointing.
I have a question about our actual meeting schedule then with respect to that, but we can get to that.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
I could probably move these up then by a week to two weeks. And then, you know, their decision can be in their April meetings, whatever.
Okay.
I'll just.
It just gives them time, because the county is the real, the county is the hard one to schedule with.
Okay. All right. So that's, that could work.
It's only one candidate, so hopefully, you know, one seat, one seat. But if you get.
Hopefully many candidates.
Many candidates, but if we narrow it down to four or five interviews, if they can narrow it down to four or five interviews, then, you know.
So then the next piece is the draft press release. And so the deadline for applications, that would just stay blank until we sort of figure that out in these days. So communications team and library made the changes that you could see highlighted. I added in more specifics about our meetings and that's what's there. So we would plug in the dates and we were planning on, you know, a meet and greet type thing in March, like we did last year and March 18th. And so any, let's see. So if we do that though, so if that's a March thing, that March meeting is when we need to consider candidates.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Right. So it actually might just be a standalone, a different date then. So it's not the 18th, but it's a date two weeks before that or something. We just have a special session and we all don't have to attend.
Yeah.
But it, you know.
So you're saying do a special meeting. Well, when, when did you close the, when would you close the applicant window, month from, you know, March 7th or like March 7th and then?
Yeah. Cause if it's like two weeks before that, yes.
Yeah. So like February 7th and March 7th.
Yeah.
And then.
And then, so it's a, you know, and it could be two weeks before the March meeting or, or actually, no, it's before, it could be the February.
No, to be the, we would.
A special meeting.
Well, no, I think you could, we could. I mean, I don't think we need to necessarily, so the next, the March meeting is March 18th. We could, I mean, if you, if you wanted to, the committee wanted to present the candidates that they recommended at that meeting, they could. But that's going to be independent really of, they don't, they don't have to. They could, but, but, but we're not going to know what the county schedule is and when you're going to do interviewing. Cause you might start interviewing like that next week, depending on what the county thing does. Because remember these also have to go back. That's why the other thing. Ratification.
One thing I don't see in here is the due date for people to apply by.
So it would be one month if it was like February 7th.
February 7th, it was, yeah, the slick outreach and recruitment.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, a little slow.
Yeah, that's right. And go live.
SD, I don't have to be smart.
February 7th is the go live date of the website, hopefully. And then February 7th, somewhere between February 7th and March 7th, hopefully like at the beginning, like the middle of February, we just do a, a public, we, like we did last time, I'd say, I would say one of the two people that are on the selection committee, just give the presentation like we did, like what's it like being a, we had like eight or nine people at that meeting.
You were both there, right?
Yeah, Tom was there.
You were there.
Thank, Andy was there.
Eight or nine people, we might have had four or five people.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. I think, I think I did one or, I think I just did one and we recorded it. And then we put it up on the website. And people could submit. What did we say about questions Sylvia? If they submitted a question, we'd make it public?
Yeah, we did. We would make the answer public so that way there was no, there was fairness and everyone had the same information.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay. Then March 18th, you know, if you want to review, if you want to submit, you know, talk, the committee wants to talk about the candidates that they had, or if anybody wants to comment, it will leave some time on the schedule for the March 18th meeting. Does that sound good?
But we as a board are deciding on the top candidates for inter.
No, that's a, no, we just said that the selection committee.
I thought that was for the selection, but I thought we were still as a board making recommendations on who to interview.
So the, so we kind of shifted a little, Benita. So what would happen is the two trustees, the, what did you call it? The trustees.
Selection committee.
Selection committee. They would go through and come up with the recommendations and then bring them back to the, to the board of trustees as a whole, asking for support of those recommendations and also to allow the trustees to provide input or their thoughts. And then that, after that, that would be, so that would be where our recommendations would come from for the who to interview. So we'd be empowering the two people who, who became the trustee selection committee.
Okay.
I think the idea is you would also provide input. My thought, and maybe, maybe I misunderstood this and if we can go back to it, was that we would also all get the applicants on March 8th or whenever the applicant, you know, pool, Celia would put together the package and send it to the trustees and to the commissioners and to the, and then we review those and then provide input individually to the selection committee prior to the March 18th meeting. So that then the, that the committee could meet together prior to the, and, and recommend based on the input from us.
So I'm, just going back, I framed it differently.
Okay.
The electeds.
Okay.
It was, you know, and so, and it was with this sense of them seeing how we handle a process in a public meeting of, you know, considering candidates.
Oh, okay.
Sort of this insider, two people, you know, make recommendations and then, you know. So I think it is important that we have some, you know, public.
Comments on.
Yeah, and that it is actually on our agenda and people see that.
We could empower the committee to, to come with, to us with their recommendations and review it if we wanted to.
That, that was kind of how I took what Andy and Doug.
But all, but all of it public.
Yeah.
That was, the idea was that it's not that the board of the other trustees would be excluded or that there wouldn't be a discussion about the recommendation. It's just that the committee would have done a lot of the legwork ahead of time to put forth a couple of people. And then if the board doesn't agree to those people, then obviously then that could change. But the selection would be sort of already initiated by the, the two ad hoc committee members. That was kind of the idea to make it go faster.
But I think, I mean, I still think like it needs, I don't know. I mean, if we were just managing this process ourselves, would we have a committee of two that would make recommendations to the whole board? On who to interview? Or would we be having that discussion?
I think you'd probably do it like we did the committee last year, which was basically, you know, like, Andy, who do you, who would you pick? And then you kind of agree on all the people, you know, that's how they, the, the county and the city would do it. Is, you know, Benita, who are your choices? Give your top choice. Tom, your top, I mean, maybe that's how, is that what you envisioned?
Yeah.
Something like.
I mean, I really think, like, it's important that they see us, you know.
I think.
Considering all of it.
Looking ahead is, we have it, we have a, we have a clear process that's on paper and that we follow it. So we can say, oh, when we take it over, this is the process. So we, you know, we can create a committee to review all the applicants for the whole board. And then as a whole board, approve the recommendations of the committee or amend them. And it doesn't mean future committees we create are two people. It could be three or four of us. But we've, we've established that, you know, we're going to have, we're going to, we're going to simplify to have a review group, but we're all going to be part of the process. And then when we come out of it, we're going to go back to the committee and give them the power interacting with the council and the commission to put the input in, once the interview process is over.
I, I, I like that. And I think the other thing I guess I would ask is, so if we were to just as a board, make the decision in a board meeting, what would be the point of having the trustee nominating committee or whatever? What would be their, I mean, it would be nice for them to have some sort of end goal, I guess.
Well, so Sylvia, they're still the ones that would make the final recommendation. Like all we're talking about here is who to interview, right? Because after that point, we're not going to have another board meeting. So at that point, we basically have to put control in the hands of those two committee members to allow them to make any decisions past that one meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, so I do think though, that you could come to the meeting with your recommendations. And then we could discuss that with the selection committee. And I think that would be appropriate. So like if, for instance, if there was a candidate that like, I don't know, there is none that I've recruited or anything like that, but I'm saying, that there was somebody that I had talked to and, you know, you know, recruited and got them to volunteer for the library. And, you know, I might, and I might want to say that at the meeting. I haven't done that. I'm just saying this, this is so, you know, and, and because they meet a special category or something that we're looking for, I would hope that we can, you know, bring that input to the committee.
I don't think this precludes that.
No, it doesn't. No, I'm saying that, that's what I'm trying to say to, to Benita.
Does it preclude that we can be in conversation with each other as long as we're using our library emails as the process is going along?
As long as it's one-on-one, yeah. You can't have more than two people. Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and then also.
Are you, are you basically explaining why it would be valuable to have this discussion as a whole board? You're saying like that we, like this would allow people to, to give additional color if there is any.
Yes.
Yeah. I think we're going to have a discussion of the board on the candidates. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that it would be agended and.
For sure.
See that and that it would be.
We did not do this last year, right? Like we did not wait.
We did not.
That's right. Okay. I just wanted, I couldn't remember if we.
That's how we got these two.
No, and that's how we gave the, yeah.
But we'd never done it before, so.
But I think that's why we want to be doing this. And so I, I don't think that the letter changes this approach in any way.
No, but I think we're working out what our understanding is.
Yeah, but I'm just saying like I would, you know, or what I communicated to anybody about this.
I think our understanding is, I'm going to recap it and you, please tell me, is that the commit, selection committee, the trustee nominating committee will review the applicants. They'll come with, you know, who they think, you know, best fits the bill to be interviewed for the trustees. You know, they can provide that to the, the board, the board members, if they have additional people or other considerations that we should consider, can bring that to the meeting and we'll discuss it. And we'll come out of that meeting with the list of people that we would recommend for interview. And then if those people get interviewed, then those two people could make decisions about who they would recommend to pick.
I mean, regardless, who gets interviewed. Make decisions instead.
Yes.
Yeah. Recommendations to pick.
Yeah.
And that's what we do.
They don't get interviewed. It'd be hard to.
Well, if they don't interview any of our candidates, we're still going to want to have to say over the ones.
Yeah, that's right. It's probably more important to top that. That, that's right. I don't think that's the case.
Yeah. Okay. So it could be though, that we might need a special meeting to do that, because it might not fall on our monthly.
Yeah, we could, how about at our February meeting, we, we, we do a special meeting for, why don't we look at the calendar and see when we get to pack it out, when the, when the window closes? And and then we can determine a special meeting, if we need a special meeting on the committee.
Or we could decide to move the March meeting in February a week later.
Yeah, we can do, do that. I will be not here, but.
So it's the March, yeah. So if it was, the deadline was March 7th, it'd be sometime after that.
Yeah, we can always put a special meeting.
18th could be too late.
Because we, what date do we want to give our recommendations?
Well, it depends on, you know, how quickly they meet, but I don't think they'd wait for us till March 18th. If they have all the applicants and applications.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it'd have to be some time there.
Yeah, let's, let's, let me, let, let's not, let me not fool around with this because we have, we know what the dates are on the calendar.
It closes on March 7th. The earliest everybody would see the.
It's March 11th.
It's March 8th when they give the packets. And so then literally it's a weekend until the next Tuesday, March 11th.
Right.
So are you guys going to be prepared to discuss all the candidates on March 11th?
I think we could be. I mean, but why don't we, do we need to do a, can we?
And then, then would you also hold that, whatever debrief, whatever informative information session for perspective?
February.
You'd hold that in mid-February?
Yeah.
It's still.
Let's be a separate special thing in, with selection committee and anybody else who wants to come.
Is there any reason that that can't just be before the February meeting? If the, if the packets, if the application goes out February 7th, 8th or whatever, why not just do the meet and greet or the February 18th meeting?
No, I think the, the meet and greet should be like the first week the, the packets go out. So whoever's the, the, one of the two people, I think, or I'll do it if, if they don't, aren't available, but should do that and record it and put it up on the website.
So you're not anticipating doing that as part of one of our regular meetings?
What's that?
So you don't want to do the candidate meet and greet as part of one of our regular meetings?
No.
So you do not want candidates to have an opportunity to observe?
They can come to a meeting and observe it. They can come to two meetings probably, but they, but the meet and greet.
Cause last year it was part of a regular meeting.
Oh, it was before the regular meeting.
It was before the regular meeting. Yeah.
It was effectively co-located with the regular meeting.
And I'm, I'm just asking why we wouldn't just do that again? And I'm, I'm just asking why we wouldn't just do that again, why not just do it in front of the February 18th meeting? That's like 10 days after the application becomes available.
That is true. That's a good idea. That's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree. I think that works.
Yeah. And they can also go and look at the one from last year.
Yeah.
I think that's available on our website, so until, until the February 18th one. So, yeah, they can meet at 5 o'clock and you can give your hour presentation then.
Cause then, yeah, I think that gives them a chance then to stay and watch the meeting if they want to.
Yeah.
Um, rather than having to come twice.
That makes sense. And we just publicly noticed that then?
Yes. We did that.
And we promote that one. Um, like I think I put it out on social media and stuff.
Okay, so I wanna just make sure, so moving on from like 45, page 46, and then the application form itself, um, you could see where we scratched kind of the previous five questions. And just as background, I think those came, you know, we sort of inherited those questions in maybe two cycles. And we just wanted to freshen up with some questions that we proposed are relevant to this time and place. So. And we also want to ask applicants to submit either a bio or a resume. It would include their volunteer experience. So there used to be a question here about, you know, talk about your volunteer experience. Have you ever served on a nonprofit board or something like that? Instead, we could just put that in the bio and ask people to provide that. And then the other 48 are the our proposed interview questions.
If we're gonna ask for a bio resume, I'd also let them just give a LinkedIn link. A lot of people that don't maintain standalone bios and resumes at this point, since it's all LinkedIn.
Yeah, but I mean, we could do both, but just also LinkedIn might not reflect if they have like volunteer experience.
Yeah, it may not, but if it is there, I don't want to make them go type up a whole PDF.
Yeah, yeah, no, that should be allowed. I mean, that should be an option. Um, the, uh, does it say, it, will it say somewhere if what we want them to emphasize is any like relevant, like any experience relevant to being on the Board of Trustees? So like volunteer work at the library or being on a board? Like, um, do we want to say that so that they make sure that that, whatever they submit reflects that?
Right now, the language is add bio or resume, including volunteer experience. That's all it says right now. And I think we, I think we were trying to change it and shift it from the language we used last year. Because last year it almost felt like we were implying that you had to have experience on a board or of some sort in order for us to, you know, consider that as part of our decision making. So you're trying to make it as open as possible so that, say, a mom who's never been on a board maybe wants to, you know, jump into a board um, positions. But yeah, I think we can adjust that to like have it open to where a LinkedIn, um, page would be easily, easily added.
I think question two, Cara, is what skills, experience and personal characteristics do you have that will help?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was, I, I think that's probably better.
Mm hmm. Yeah. And I think I just am careful about like LinkedIn might come across as sort of a privileged place to be, right?
We should give it as an option.
Yeah, no, really, just like, you know, and so that's why, you know, sort of the tone has been more.
Yeah.
Grassrootsy. Yeah. Um, so those were the questions and the questions continue on 49. And if I forgot, but again, the selection committee considers these questions. They may like them, they may not, they could do something else. And so that's it. And then the outreach approach we had at the, in our December packet, we had that full listing and the chart that had to contact people for, you know, broadened outreach and we'll include that in what we send tomorrow.
And yeah, we're just gonna need to like have somebody do a look see over that to make sure that all the links and anything in that package um, are current, um, cause there is a lot more to the package than just what, um, what we shared with you. There is a whole section in the outreach section. Um, so I don't know if like staff or someone can just kind of take a, just a quick look, just to make sure we don't have anything outdated, um, referenced.
Yep.
Did I recall last year, was there a thing where we basically listed, these are specific things we're looking for in a candidate?
We did have, we, we provided that input to the, 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 the board um, or the selection committee. But I don't think we, and we talked about it at the, as a board. Um, but I, you know, I don't think, uh, we included it this year.
I guess this is kind of Sam's question as well as to whether there's any kind of rubric or whether we want to provide any guidance for this is what we think the ideal candidate would look like.
Hmm, yeah. Um.
I mean, it's fine not to, but.
Yeah, I, I was.
We've seen council members base their decisions off some interesting factors.
Yeah, I think, um, I think right now, being as open and flexible as possible, um, is probably a good idea. I think, you know, with the, you know, just going back to last year, um, is, you know, we were looking for some skill sets because we were transitioning IT systems, um, you know, we were, you know, we didn't have our finance systems up and going. I think a lot of that stuff now, we have the expertise within the library staff, um, to guide us as a board on. Um, so I, my personal thing was just someone that loves the library. That, that's what I said to Sylvia and to, to, to Benita, but, um, you know, I don't know, if there's other things we want to consider, that that's something I think we bring up at the March 18th.
I think it might look too narrow, I mean, for us right now.
In the, in the applications.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to discourage people from applying because we say we want a CFO.
This is, yeah.
Yeah.
This will probably be more interesting next year. Cause like we have said in the past, we want to maintain gender balance on the board, which this year won't really matter because we're losing a guy and we have a majority of men already. But next year, when we lose a woman, we're basically in the position of saying we have to select another woman.
Well, we also, uh.
Or at least not a dude.
Cara, I think is off, I think you're next year.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
So she's also in the county, so we need to maintain our county-city balance too as well. So those are things I think we talk about it at the meeting.
One of the things that we did provide, you remember, I think with staff's help, was, um, a map that showed where we all live and also showed the applicants, you remember that?
Yeah, I think.
And the applicants too, that they interviewed, just so they could see, you know, sort of the diversity of and where the current board is at and what we represent.
Sylvia, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, sorry. I was just saying the way to resolve that is for Cara to reapply next year, sorry.
She will, I think. I mean, that's the other interesting, we haven't talked about that, if Sam wanted to reapply. You know, I think that would be something we would talk about at the board and, you know.
We have talked about it.
We did.
If I remember right, Sam said, hell no.
Yeah.
I, but like. But no, I'm, I'm not interested, um. I don't want to derail this, but if, can, I, I, did we move on from, um, uh, the discussion of uh, our process? Because, you know, I, I, I don't have clarity yet, I apologize for that, but I think somebody said earlier, you know, we need to really present a clear process to the public. And so I'm not, I mean, I, I understand the timeline. I don't understand the roles of the board versus the two-person selection committee quite well enough to, um, be able to explain that. So would somebody be able to succinctly explain what I guess was decided in the discussion? Is that a fair question?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a good call, um.
So as I understand it, Sam, and I, and I also want to come back to clarify it, is that it will be a March 20th agenda item?
18.
I'm sorry, March 18th.
Oh, eight.
Agenda item for the board to discuss. The selection committee will come prepared with a recommendation, but to be discussed at the meeting, all candidates.
And then.
And sorry, 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 sorry. The point of that meeting will be to discuss who should be interviewed.
Recommended for, recommended for interview, yep.
But it could be a meeting that happens before March 18th.
Yes, well, we'll know.
Okay.
We'll know.
Also have the question too.
So, and then after that, um, the interview process will go, Sam. Likely we won't meet as a board. So the two nomination committee members are empowered to meet and you know, if they want to make a selection of one or two or whatever, how many people that they, you know, would recommend that the, the county and the city would, would, um, um, pick, then they, they can do that from.
They, what, so, wait. The selection committee is gonna come to the March 18th meeting with its recommendations. As a board, we're gonna consider that, make a decision on what we think right, going forward to the county and the city should be interviewed. At that point on, the selection committee has the power to recommend through the interview process who the trustees or think should be on the board. We're done this room.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, you as a neutral trustee are welcome to watch the interviews and email the selection committee members your opinions, but yes.
But nobody is recommending that's a formal step in the process. That's not recommended in your letter to the city council, that's not recommended in your letters to the county commissioners. Shouldn't you be in the meeting and they say to you like, who do you think is the best one? That, and you are empowered by the board to say, I think the best one is this person. But that's an informal thing, not having to do with the formal process, which the city and the county have established.
Yeah, I, I would, this is where I'd potentially be a little more aggressive, especially if they asked last year. I mean, I think we could say in our letter, our selection committee is happy to make a recommendation after the interviews, as to the final candidates. And if we don't want to say that, we don't have to say that. But again, they asked last year, they've opened the door, I think we should walk through it.
But if they didn't, I mean, so that committee could be very different.
It could.
And.
I'd prefer to push them in the direction we want them to go instead of just.
But I mean, so they could ask us. And we would be able to, you know, know that we have the endorsement of the board to express one's opinion.
Yeah, I think that.
We can put it in there in this letter, just to say that after that March 18th meeting, the selection committee has the power to make recommendations to the council and the committee representing all the trustees. They have the power to do it. And then we dodge the, we push a little harder, but we don't push too hard.
They, they are always welcome to ignore our recommendation. It is but a recommendation.
Well, at least we, we've established that we're gonna do it.
I think that they would, just based on being in there last year, that they would appreciate a some more input from us on what we think. Um, you know, um, so, uh, and.
So you think it should be in the letter or are we like kind of following?
I put it in the letter.
Point that could be an important.
I'd review it the way Tom stated it.
Then it's, yeah. And this is the letter that's going to them before it's going out, so they.
The memo back on page.
Page 42.
Forty two.
So, um, in that paragraph, so after the, the committee may consider the recommendations from the library board and their determination of who to interview. Um.
Should the.
I would say.
Final ca, final candidate from the trustee recommendation committee, they are empowered to.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that, I think is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Sylvia.
I was just agreeing, sorry.
Okay, no, I, I'm just glad we can still hear you, so, everyone.
Sam, did that answer your question or is it still clear as mud?
No, I think, I think it's pretty clear. Yeah, thank you for that. And I appreciate all your work on this, Benita and Sylvia, to get it where it is today.
This discussion has made it stronger.
Yeah, it's year two.
The committee request, yeah.
It's year two.
Recommendation of a final candidate, the committee is empowered to do so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and it's year two and, you know, um, luckily they only have to pick one person this year. Um, and so like, um, as a board, we just need to understand, you know, it's our role of alls and that kind of stuff, so. Okay, any other, um, we need to revisit any other part of this packet?
I want to go over the timeline again, but you all need to recommend to.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, but.
I have one thing.
Okay.
This is the, the outreach approach.
Mm hmm.
To suggest we put the Boulder N double A C P on this.
I thought they were on there.
I don't think so.
They might be on the next.
That we cut out, we.
Cause we didn't include it.
We didn't include the whole list.
I think this just starts, but I don't think it starts.
Okay.
I think it's.
Yeah, there's a list of like.
It's under the end, not.
Yeah, 30 of these. They raised a lot of, uh, concern over how the Boulder Valley Plan stuff is being helped by the city and not feeling included in it. Just to get caught in that trap.
No.
Yeah, so I'm pretty sure that.
Everyone a personal email, please groups and say, you know, please apply. That's what the press release does.
Okay.
And it'll be in the paper, I hope, you know, we can go on K G and you or something, I don't know, you know, like, um, but. Uh, okay, any more comments on the package before we move to the committee selection? Anita, do you have every?
No, I don't have, I think I've got pieces here.
And you can work with David tomorrow to get everything.
Yeah, we're silly and, yeah.
Silly, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
Well, so are we gonna be able?
The committee.
Timeline then.
You want to do that?
About timeline.
Yeah, so I, I mean, the first three are right, but so.
Okay.
Intent is for the packet to go to Mark, right? So you have stated here, and so we, we will try to do that by the end of the day, but I, I think this timeline has to be set. You can't have like, maybe we'll have a special date unless you're gonna say on this document, perhaps a special meeting or something like that, so, um. Do you really care if early February, the Board of County Commissioners and Council appoints selection committee members? Doesn't that just have to be before March 8th?
Mm hmm.
So can we just say before March 8th? Board of County Commissioners and City Council appoints selection committee members.
But the only thing is that in the press release and on the website, I think we indicate who's on the committee.
Taken that out.
But just so people know, but you know, and I, I don't know if it made a difference in an applicant's consideration. I don't know if they, you know, maybe reached out to a council person or, you know, but.
Um.
We, we can update the website as soon as they appoint their folks, right?
Yeah.
Wanted to list them.
You know, you, you, you're telling another governing body when to point their people by, I don't know how safe that is. Like, you need to have a drop, drop dead date. I'm just, that's what.
Okay.
So it's, it's up to you, though, you want to say early February they do it, what if they don't by early February? Then we just hold the press release or we just don't put the names in the press release?
We just want the names in press release.
Where are you looking at?
I'm looking at.
On the press release?
It's, no, just.
Timeline.
It's here, the early February is what.
Oh, early February, okay.
Yeah, so.
I'll say, yeah, why don't we just say, um.
February.
Four months.
By March.
February 5th.
I would say just by March 6th, they.
Okay.
Yeah. Um.
Okay, so the comments then, so the February 18th would be the meet and greet? Is that correct? February 7th and March 7th is the date that the application will run.
Right.
Uh. Uh, are you saying February 18th, you'll have a meet and greet from 5 to 6?
Yeah, February 18th.
Okay, so then, um, the public outreach thing here would run from February 7th to March 7th. Uh, the selection committee would review the applicants from March 7th to when? From March 8th, let's say, March 8th to.
Well, this selection committee is the full selection committee.
That's the selection committee. Yours is the.
Okay.
Whatever you're calling it.
Calling it.
Trustee nomination committee.
Okay.
The selection committee consists of the two council members and the two county commissioners.
Yep.
So they would, by March 8th, they have to be in existence, so the selection committee reviews applications from March 8th until March.
So, so we basically need the date at which they select who to interview because we also need to deliver any recommendation.
March 8th is Saturday. March eighth is Saturday. March tenth is a Monday, obviously. I mean, a week? I don't know if we said like March thirteenth.
March tenth to March twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I would.
Give him more time?
I'd do at least March twenty-fourth, yeah.
Yeah.
And then is it still by?
We're going to need a week just to make our recommendation to that committee.
By April fourteenth, selection committee interviews the top candidates, is that still correct?
Yeah, that's good.
Did you want to insert the possibility for a special meeting on March eleventh? For you all?
Yeah, we get to say possible.
Do we need to put that on this schedule?
It doesn't hurt.
We might as well.
Cause we'll notice it at the next meeting and if we need it. Hopefully, one of the, the jobs of the two committee people is, is also to lock down the dates with the county and the city so that they can follow the deadlines.
Well, I think, yeah.
And I'll help with that.
That, yeah.
Okay, so I think the rest of it's.
Special meeting.
And we'll send out the full list of candidates, of applicants, sorry, full list of applicants on March eighth. To all.
That's Saturday.
Board of Trustees and to the selection committee. All right, that's what I needed.
And that's okay to do on a Saturday?
Oh, March tenth, let's say March tenth.
Well, then we couldn't have a special meeting on the eleventh because that would be too soon.
Yeah, really is a catch. That's, I mean, we.
Winner applicants do, winner applications do.
The seven.
Yeah, but you're just.
We can, I think, I mean, it's not a ton of time, but how much time does it take to read? I, I guess it, is there any staff time involved? But this is just us having to spend that weekend reading everyone's application.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll close the thing at three o'clock or something. And we'll make clear that it closes at three o'clock and we'll send it to you that day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we can accommodate that.
Get the last.
Twelve, eleven, twelve.
Oh, for those last two seats? Before that, it was like the whole board, but it was fifty. I expect six, I think that's a reasonable number.
So it could be.
I mean, it's, it's comparable that we send out the packets on Friday, we have the weekend to read it, and we meet on Tuesday. It'd be the same kind of thing. We did pull this to applicants on Friday, we have the weekend to read it, we talk about them on Tuesday.
If, if, if the, if you're not meeting with the county until after the eighteenth, we just canceled the special meeting and you, you know.
No, you would want to meet with the county af, oh, until after our.
Yeah, after.
The other day.
Yeah.
Think if they're fine with you.
Yeah. Can we go to the selection of members?
Yeah, okay. So the packet is complete, everybody, anybody else have comments on that? No? Okay, so I'm going to open the floor up for anyone who wants to be on the nominating selection committee. Just raise your hand and, hey, Benita?
I'll do it.
Okay, Sylvia? Tom? Okay.
I was plotting, I'm like plotting, so.
Oh, okay. Andy, do you want to?
I'm out of the country the month of April, so.
Oh, okay.
Includes my involvement.
Cara, are you interested in?
I'm okay with Benita and Sylvia.
Okay, all right. So since it's, um, Sam, I don't, I'm assuming, you know, you don't want to be a part of it. I'm going to ask you anyway, no?
I would certainly do it if there weren't two people volunteering, but there are, so.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, that was, that was easy and, um, so then, do we need to vote on that, Cam, or I think it's just a nod of.
You can just, you can just appoint.
Okay, I'm going to move to appoint Benita and Sylvia as our nominating, you guys can come up with a name, selection committee. Any, anyone opposed? Okay, it's so, so moved, they're pointing.
Okay, thank you.
By the power vested in me, the chair of, okay.
I think we have a good packet together here and some solid questions that make.
I have a presentation that I did. The, that I did for, um.
Yeah.
And you can look at that and make changes. Basically, I just copied sort of the trustee hand bylaws and the, it's, it's pretty simple explanatory, but. Just to give it people.
Okay.
An idea. Now, Sylvia, is this your turn to talk about the schedule or? Sorry.
First we had trustee correspondence, just something we need.
Oh, yeah, trustee, that was just an email, you saw what I was doing over Christmas Eve. From our lovely, um, you know, issues that we had in the backyard and the stabbing that occurred back there. Seems to have moved down river or upriver or whichever way they pushed them. Unfortunately, is what, what we're at. The, the underbelly has actually remarkably stayed camp free. I don't know, David, it's been pretty good back down there, I, in my experience. So that was just what we did, that seemed to, to, um, placate this community member. I hadn't heard anything else, so.
Maybe, did you say that there was something on Nextdoor related to this?
On the Saturday? Uh, there was a lot.
It was.
I mean, basically this email was a recap, it was a copy and paste from a Nextdoor post by.
Sherry.
No, by another community member.
Yeah, so, you know, they, they were, I mean, so just full transparency, right? Since it's all in the packet, like a guard was punched in.
Yeah, we knew that, yeah.
I think we did talk about that before. She acquitted herself very well, she did not do anything in response. We asked, we had the person escorted out of the building, but that was it, so.
Okay.
The guards are okay.
The guard doesn't, she resigned sometime afterwards, not necess, she moved away from the car.
So fifty-three, what? We need to do something here.
Now. My packet's all messed up.
Oh, nothing right fifty-three?
No, it's just, let's see.
No, that, I mean. The correspondent issue.
These are just, um, these are the, we're in the email, this is just continuing the email.
You know, somebody did research in the police blotter.
Okay.
Term library, which.
Now.
Police dispatch.
Okay.
Mostly says in the area of the library, they don't specify if it's, oftentimes the address, one oh oh one Arapaho is given for incidents between Ninth Street and Eleventh Street. Um, and so we've, we've talked with them about that before. And I think their data analyst is doing a much better job now. He does, he, he does specify if there areas inside or outside, but it doesn't say so on the police blotter, it's whatever's called in. I mean, I, I've looked through these incidents, as far as I know, the only one that I'm, was somebody happening in the library, although there are many times in the reports that are copied here from sports where the officers maybe say, sounds like maybe they were in the library, but they weren't, like, there was nobody in here to stick with a, something inside the library at any time.
Okay, now I get it. So Sherry included this information, these highlighted things are from Sherry.
Yeah, the whole from, um.
Got it, no, 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 I got.
Yeah, yeah, the whole thing.
All right. Now I understand.
Her comments.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted you guys to see how I respond to these things in the future. If I'm sick or incapacitated or no longer part of the board, you know, that you can also respond in similar way. I think, you know, I think we've.
You would have to designate somebody to respond.
Yeah, if I was.
Any of us could respond.
But I'm saying if like, in, if I'm, yeah, if we're, somebody else.
Yes.
And.
Okay.
And I think we've taken security very seriously and I want the community to know that. And I mean, I feel it when I'm here. My twelve-year-old daughter, you know, she's like, there's a freaking guard everywhere you go in this place. I mean, this is what she says, like, so she's like, I don't think, you know, it'd be hard for something to get, you know, get over on them because there's guards everywhere. And so, um, but I mean, she feels relatively safe here. So I think for me, it's a, it's a felt, you know, improvement to the library from whatever a few years ago. And I love the cafe, I sit there a lot, you know, it's hopping a lot of times or sometimes it's dead, but, you know. So, yeah, I think it's a, I think we've done a good job and.
And since within the library are down, but that doesn't, I mean, I, I don't mean to disparage what this person wrote. Like, the community does not see, there's not a bright line, right? They see the condition of the outside and we've had this conversation at the retreat. So the conditions all around the library are reflective, for better or worse, they are reflective on us in some extent. And so I tell, when the camps get big, we don't go out and talk to people. Like, it is not safe. When there's a couple of encampments, we talk to everybody at camps, right? Ask them to clean up their trash, ask them to, but when there's forty tents, I mean, you can go around and ask the staff. When I was, I said a week before, somebody's going to get hurt. And like literally within a week, somebody got stabbed. I, I, in fact, I said, somebody's going to get stabbed. And I thought I knew probably the people who were going to be stabbed, but it turned out not to be them, but there wasn't stabbing. It was, it was obvious, if you're here every day, that things had gotten out of control very suddenly. In a brief time, it went from a small encampment.
Yeah, it was like two people to.
Rest of Ninth Street to like thirty tents, right? And, and they stayed for roughly a week.
And they didn't, that, the thing was still back there and everything, like the police video and anyway. But this is how we respond and I think we've done a great job, we're going to keep, keep it up and, you know, things will, this is the, we get hundreds of thousands of people here every year, so, you know, there's no town of hundreds of thousands of people that don't have it, have zero incidents. And that's what I told Charlie, like, we're not going to have zero incidents, but, um, I think it's a really safe place to be.
This has nothing to do with the safety issue. The one thing I would note about this particular correspondence is this was a person writing on behalf of another person.
Yeah.
I think we should be careful accepting that sort of thing in general because we have no way of knowing that they're actually writing on behalf of the other person. So, I mean, it's just, it's basically our version of hearsay, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I would just, again, I think in this case it was.
This is.
Mute, but.
I can vouch for the fact that Sherry was writing for Jen.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it is such a general practice, like.
I know.
People have to speak for themselves as to a public party, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments Sylvia, you're off mute, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just going to ask, because I, I feel like in light of how many people are in our district, like, we really don't actually get that many written, like complaints or correspondence like this. So I don't know, like, David, do you feel like, like, like what, like what level of, um, input are you getting from people, um, just like one-on-one?
Oh, I get complaints, I get phone calls, but it's not, I mean, this past summer, when it was really a lot of camps and a lot of encampments, and they were persistent, they had been persistent for months. I was getting calls every week, um, from people just dismayed, right? This dismay and disgust and everything else. No, we don't get a lot of written comments and actually things now have settled down dramatically. But yeah, um, I don't know, you know, it is a concern for the staff. I do think people are turned away, they don't comment on it at all, they, when, when we, when there are heavy amounts of encampments. And it's not, I don't, my personal opinion is not about the tents at all, it's about the trash, fires, drug use, the presence of noticeable public intoxication, those are things that really bother and frighten people, right? Not, it's not the fact there's a tent there. And I, I will say for the public record, like, none of us would care if it was a bunch of Scandinavian tourists, right? If it was Scandinavian tourists who camped in the park every summer and winter and then everybody would think how cute it was, but that's not what it is. The, the reality is, is that the encampments, uh, with the exception of one camp that's been pretty steady, it's pretty obvious that it's, uh, some severe drug use and groups that are, um, not necessarily interested in cleaning up after themselves. So there's a lot of trash, uh, and that does wear down staff pretty significantly. We have fires started out in front of the library, like on a weekly basis still. I mean, we clean them up if we're able to identify them by video camera, we then suspend them from the library for starting a fire on, in front of the library. But yeah, there's not a whole lot of things we can do. We fill out the report just like everybody else does. We fill out the same report, um, uh, on whatever it's called, Boulder, Inquire Boulder.
It's, it's, what I find is, it's just, it's, you could have nothing for a long time, you know, with encampments and then, like this one.
Happened very quickly.
Like literally, within like two days, it was forty tents of like, and, and like, um.
That's unbelievable.
Yeah, and then like, in front of the library over here, you know, before the storm, you know, it started to get big, you know? And like, so, um, it's just like, it, it's random, it's like, it fluctuates like that. Yeah, anyway.
I think you had a good response, I appreciate it. Lamar had written to me, Sherry wrote to her. We both wrote back and answered it. And we're responsive to it and I think that's all we can be and.
Yeah.
They're going to be instant.
Yeah.
Going to come and go and we keep it.
Yeah.
Or what you've written, I think.
Okay. Moving.
Schedule.
Schedule. Did you have a comment about the schedule or?
Yeah, I was just wondering, so we do our annual meeting in the election of officers at the meeting before we actually have our new member.
That's right.
Should we push that forward a meeting? I mean, again, it's not like the new member would ever really run to be an officer, but we potentially would want to appoint them to the, you know, to the board or to the foundation or to some of these other roles. It just seems a little silly that we are doing our election without our fully seated board.
I have to laugh because I brought that up.
That was, yes, I think, um, so if we have to, if we do want to change the annual meeting where we elect officers, I think we will have to, we'll have to change the bylaws.
Yes.
So I'm okay doing that. And perhaps, um, my only concern is when we would move it to, um.
The May meeting presumably.
Yeah, we could do the May meeting and you would run from May to May or something. And then, um, and then I think that's good. I, my, I, there was, before we talked about it, it was like December or January and I'm like, it's, I think at the end of the year is really hard with the budget because we're kind of consumed with the budget, so I think May would be.
I think it was, yeah, we talked about it being like, to keep it on a fiscal year or something like that. But I do know that last year I raised this issue, so I appreciate that somebody else has seen it because, and I know that we have to change our bylaws to do it, but as it was suggested last time, it was like, well, you can do that, you could try to do that.
The rationale for where it is where it is, is that you don't want to prevent the person in their last year on the board from being elected an officer and doing it in May would mean that they have a month pass where their, their last meeting, their last meeting, Sam's last meeting is April and he doesn't attend the May meeting. And so if he were to be chair, had he been chair this year, he'd have the election after he was gone. So you'd, you'd want to move it up to January, not to move it back behind April, because the, the terms are unmade, but.
Well, I, I mean, I don't think we'd move it up though, because the whole point would be to ensure we're aligning the election with whoever joined the board. But you're right, you either, you either disqualify the new person from being in these roles.
Okay, good.
The leaving person, I mean, I don't know if you would disqualify him. Like, let's say Sam was the president, we have a vice president role, they would simply take over the presidential duties for that one. For not even the full meeting, for the first thirty minutes of the meeting until we complete the election of officers. Like, it would be a pretty minimal process in practice. I mean, Alex, I don't have a super strong feeling about this, but it does feel a little weird that we do all of our elections and appointments at the meeting right before we have our newest member join us.
I think you would probably want to do like a weird two-month term for like June till, and then re, and then do the election in like June or something or May, you know, I guess.
What do you mean?
He's talking about changing it this year.
If you changed it this year, you'd want to, um, I'm okay with that. Do you, uh, I mean.
When we have to. When we elected our officers.
Well, we'd have to refer to the governance committee, you have to come back with a, a proposal, so.
We can do, we can do that, we can look at the language and come up with some suggested changes. But I mean, I think it'd be nice to have some direction on like, well, what would we be changing it to? Do you want us to make the suggestion or do you want to kind of give us some direction about how to adjust it?
I, I mean, I would just move it to, I would, I mean, I'd basically just say we move the annual meeting to May and I guess we have to figure out what to do with the terms of the, like, do you currently elected folks, should we elect them in specific terms? Or did we just say you're the president until our next annual meeting?
That's it, to your next annual meeting.
So we don't have to change the terms. So all we have to do is move the annual meeting to March and congratulations.
To go back to that.
You get an extra.
That's where we were kind of confused by, you thought you were chairing the May meeting and I was chairing, I chaired.
You should have chaired the May meeting, yeah.
I did.
You did, that's right.
Yeah, but you thought until like a week before that. But you thought until like a week before that.
Right.
Your term had started.
Right, right, that's right.
And.
I'm okay, if you guys want to.
I mean, I guess we'd have to, so it sounds like we gotta look at the language and see what we actually elected for current officers.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. I'm pretty sure it says, just says April right now. But it would be pretty easy to, to look at that and make an adjustment.
And serve until the next annual meeting.
Yeah.
It just defines the annual meeting as the, the April meeting, the April, um, regular meeting.
I mean, if this is like, this gets really complicated, but if there's an easy way to move it from April to May, that seems like it might be worth doing.
No, I mean, I agree. I think at this point it would be, make more sense to just to have like sort of one big meeting in May, where we have new person, new officers, new whatever.
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
I think there were reasons previously to not do that, but I think at this point, going forward, it would make sense.
So people could vote, people meeting.
So, how about? How about you? Can you guys bring something back?
Yeah.
What, what is, uh, bylaw changes? Kim, do we have to?
Notice.
Notice? What's the format for bylaw changes?
Yeah, I'm looking right now. I'll let you know as soon as I find it.
I think we had to post it for like thirty days and something like that. We're almost done.
Are you gonna be in April?
So.
Must be in written form. Received by all trustees at least ten working days prior to the first reading. Can be adopted by a vote of two-thirds of the trustees then serving. And that's it. Must conform to the Colorado statutes.
And we adopt it after the first reading? Is that right?
Yes, it must be, because it doesn't say anything about a second reading.
Okay, so if you guys could meet and hopefully bring it by February eighteenth, and then we can vote on it.
Ten days before February eighteenth.
Yeah, or else we vote on it in March.
No, you could just, I mean, you, but we, we, we just vote on it in March to move the annual meeting to May or whatever. You know what I mean?
Why wouldn't we?
We could do either.
If we could do either.
Ready by the first half of February.
You would just need it by February eighth, or by, by, if, and then we could, um, go ahead, Chris.
In May, just a couple of observations based on foundation experience with this topic. What, one is, um, setting a date in the bylaws for an annual meeting is a procedural item that you might want to just extricate from your bylaws. You could set the date outside your bylaws. The bylaws could refer to an annual meeting. That's just one option, one thing to think about.
Something like the chair will designate.
What happens?
Or something, yeah.
It's just that you're putting a procedural, pretty tactical thing in your bylaws.
Yeah.
By swapping one month for another. You could just take the designation out of the bylaw. The other observation is, um, you know, right now, you basically, out of the seven of you are saying the way it stands now, in April by electing officers before the next one comes in, you've got a lame duck and you don't have your new one, so you have one option. Between the five. You know, not the seven, not the six. And maybe you're okay with that. You know, maybe the person coming in should be viewed as not experienced enough to hold an officer position anywhere. But, but that's the, that's the situation you have right now, is you've got a lame duck, you know, as long as you're one out and one on. There may be, I forget cadence, are there years coming up when?
There's two, yeah. Yeah.
So two out, two on, in the current cadence is problematic, because that reduces you to three candidates for officer.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Yeah.
Just observation.
Yeah, I mean, Chris is pointing to like, I don't think we would expect the new people to run for officer roles, but I don't think we should write it into our bylaws that they can't. Like, we should give them the opportunity, and if we feel like they're not.
Well, they could be awesome. They could be someone who wants to run again.
Yeah.
Is a se, serving a second term or third term, so they could be experienced.
Yep.
I think it empowers a new board member, you know, as opposed to having to wait a year.
Okay.
To vote.
So I think it's okay, if you want to, we could vote on it the February eighteenth meeting, or.
We have it.
If you have it. If not, I don't know.
It's that one item, yeah. It's probably a really simple, like, one sentence change, literally. So it shouldn't, it's not gonna be extensive. It, our, our bylaws are pretty spare, so it's, it's not gonna be too difficult to change it.
Okay, so that, we'll review, uh, send that to the governance committee, and the governance committee can propose it.
Okay.
Before. Well, you need to do it in February, sorry. Because if you did it in March, it'd be too late. Because, uh, we would need officers by March fifteenth, I think. The bylaws do say that.
Yeah, I, I think it's literally like one or two sentences at most, so there's.
Yeah, yeah.
Couldn't have it ten days before, so February eighth, yeah, that's very doable. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
And Sam, I don't care what everybody else says. You're not a lame duck in my mind.
Thank you. I, I would say what I said a year ago, which is, um, it makes more sense for it to happen in May. And, you know, the, and that was the practice on the school board, where you would be seated, and then you would vote on officers, and the new people would vote with, uh, the, the returning board members, so it, it's not difficult for a officer candidate to have a conversation or coffee with a appointee to make their intentions known and build a relationship so that the person isn't coming in completely clueless. Yeah, I think this way was just a legacy of, uh, board dynamics at the time, or seemed like a good idea, but it would make more sense for, for it to be in May.
Okay.
The only thing I ought to add in there, um, I think is when people need to self-nominate for, uh, I, I think about that a little bit for, because if there's new board members at that first meeting, I guess.
Well, that's what he's just saying, that people would have a conversation.
Yeah, but they would have to self-nominate before they're, if they wanted to be a treasurer, before they're on the board. So.
That's fine.
Just, I'm just saying, think of, just remembering it.
We can make it work.
It can, it can work the same. It's something you have to, and maybe we don't, maybe nobody self-nominate before, and they just come to the meeting prepared to nominate themselves or whatever, so.
Do we have any other schedule things here?
Um, we just need to do the annual re, administrative resolution. So I'm gonna move on from the schedule in the annual meeting. And has everyone read the annual administrative resolution? And can we just, um, nominate, um, move to adopt it?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the annual administrative resolution of the Boulder Public Library District? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Do you have a? Any other trustee matters or anything else? Kim, do you have anything you need to, 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 to say?
Nope, it's all good.
Alright, thanks for your counsel and advice and. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, what time are you gonna be done with your?